Twenty twenty one. This meeting was called by myself on Friday, and I would like to thank administration for their ability to make this happen on short notice, and also council for making this happen. This is somewhat different than a regular council meeting in that all we will only speak on are the three specific items as listed in the notice of special council meeting that was released by the city clerk. I would like to start by looking for motion to adopt the agenda.
Your worship, I will move the adoption of the agenda as was circulated.
Thank you, Councillor Lewis, a seconder.
I'll second that, your worship.
Thank you, Councillor Friesen. Any questions about this agenda? If not, moved by Councillor Lewis and seconded by Councillor Friesen, all those in favor. This is passed. First item for the for action will be the report presented by the General Manager of Infrastructure and Operations, Mr. Minkin, please proceed.
Good afternoon, your worship and members of council. This report deals with the light and power franchise area expansion. The City of Swift Current Light and Power Department is the electric utility provider within the defined franchise area for the City of Swift Current. This franchise area and the right to supply, transmit, distribute, and sell is defined in the Government of Saskatchewan, the Power Corporation Act. The City of Swift Current electrical franchise area boundaries were originally established in nineteen fifty eight and were expanded in nineteen eighty six and nineteen eighty nine. The City of Swift Current has benefited from the profitability of the electrical utility business over the years, which now provides approximately six million, six million dollars annually to the city's revenue. After the expansion of the city boundaries in two thousand and eleven, the City of Swift Current identified the need to expand the electrical franchise area to the new city boundaries based on the following principles: control of the electric utility within the city's boundaries; financial benefit for Swift Current and of future customer and revenue growth; the financial benefit of all electric customers in Saskatchewan by avoiding duplication of infrastructure; all Swift Current customers would receive the same policies and service level, including during power outages; improved safety for the City of Swift Current and SAS Power staff by providing clear boundaries; improved safety for the public by avoiding confusion for underground locates. The City of Swift Current began negotiations with SAS Power and the Government of Saskatchewan to expand the City Swi- the City of Swift Current's electric electrical franchise area in two thousand and eleven. Since that time, there have been various studies to establish the value of the expanded franchise area to the City of Swift Current and SAS Power. In December of two thousand and seventeen, the City of Swift Current and SAS Power agreed to proceed with formal negotiations based on the principle of ensuring no negative impact to SAS Power's customers. SAS Power provided the City of Swift Current with an internal study of the franchise value. To ensure due diligence, the City of Swift Current engaged Price Waterhouse Coopers, LLP, to provide an independent valuation for the expanded franchise area, which confirmed the value that SAS Power had provided. In November of twenty twenty, the City of Swift Current and SAS Power agreed to a non-binding memorandum of understanding to establish the value of the expanded electrical franchise area and the terms for transfer to provide a framework for both parties' governance approvals. The agreed value to of the electrical franchise area expansion is fourteen point eight million dollars plus applicable taxes. It is therefore respectfully recommended that council approves the terms of the memorandum of understanding and directs administration to proceed with acquiring the expanded electrical franchise area.
Thank you, Mr. Minkin. Council, I will be looking for a motion. Go ahead, Councillor Lewis.
Your worship, I'll be happy to move that council approves the terms of the memorandum of understanding and directs administration to proceed with acquiring the expanded electrical franchise area.
Thank you, Councillor Lewis, a seconder, please.
Your worship, I'll be very happy to second that.
Thank you, Councillor Friesen. Now, the floor is open for some discussion and debate on this. Does anybody want to start? Councillor Lewis, go right ahead.
Thanks, your worship. I have been on city council since two thousand and nine, and I think since that time, I know that there has been open files with SAS Power with relation to, well, our franchise area expansion, as well as a few other things. I do, however, know, though, that this this report that you guys brought today is is just the the Kohl's Notes version of the history of this file, and and I think we would be remiss if we didn't mention, you know, the staggering history of this file between SAS Power and the City of Swift Current. So I'm extremely happy to see this report come today, to bring this file, at least I believe, to a conclusion. You know, there's, I think, some folks that that we need to mention and to to thank in helping us to get over the line here today. You know, first of all, I want to thank the provincial government, as well as our local MLA Everett Hindley, as well as our former MLA Brad Wall for their work on this file on our behalf. I want to thank all of the former members of council and administration who've worked on this. This is a file that, as I mentioned, has seen the spectrum of many different councils and many different members of administration working diligently towards some solution and some conclusion. I want to thank our city solicitor, Murray Walters, for all of his work in, again, just the staggering history on this file and and helping us to get where we are today. And then I want to say a thank, a special thanks to to our mayor, Al, Tim, as well as our current admin team for getting to this to the spot where it's at today, because, as I said, this has been a file that I've been involved in personally since two thousand and nine. It's one that council has talked about frequently. It's a and it's an issue that is extremely important to the future citizens of the City of Swift Current, and will have massive impact on how the city does business moving forward. So to all those folks, I want to say a special thank you. The work that you put in is much appreciated by me, as well as, I'm sure, by all the rest of us sitting around the table, as well as former councillors and and former mayors, members of the admin team. So now that that's out of the way, I just wanted to, you know, to talk a little bit about, I think, what this means for the city. And yes, it's true that we're looking at taking additional debt, and that's something that was talked about frequently in the in the last election. You know, debt is a is a tool, and it's a tool that should be used in the right circumstances, and it's a tool that should be used cautiously for reasons that benefit not just today's citizens, but also the citizens over the entirety of the time that that debt needs to be financed. I truly believe that debt should only be used when you can see a benefit over a number of years. Like, if you're financing for for five years, for example, citizens for those five years should be able to, who are going to be paying for that, should also be able to experience the benefit of having that. This is one of those things where we're going to see some increased expense, obviously, but we're also going to see a matching increase in revenue. So at least the way that it's been under or that I understand it, the way that it's being explained to us by admin is that we're really going to see essentially an offset between expenses and revenue moving forward until the time that this is fully covered and paid for. And then at that point in time, it will become, just like the city's receiving now, a utility dividend, that that council is able to make a decision on on what they think the best use is for that dividend. And once that point in time is reached, that dividend is going to be nothing but an an awesome benefit for people that reside in the City of Swift Current moving forward. And councils at that point in time will have the ability to to use their best judgment to determine how those sorts of revenues, additional revenues, will best be used, you know, whether that's to subsidize taxation or for special projects, or, you know, to avoid taking future debt. But this is a, you know, I don't want to pretend that this isn't a project that we're not taking debt out for, and but it is a it is a decision that's being made. It's a business decision that's being made for the best interests of the citizens of Swift Current, because this is like this is like purchasing another business. Of course, you're going to have to pay for it over time, but eventually, when you're done paying for it, then you get to reap the world the benefits and the rewards of that. So I want to say thanks again to all those folks that have been involved. I want to say thanks to the folks who work on the ground in our light and power department, who do a phenomenal job and is the reason why doing this makes sense for us. So, yeah, without, if I've said anything wrong, admin, please feel free to jump in. And I'm sorry for taking so long on the mic here, your worship. I just felt as somebody who has a bit of historical experience with this, that it might be, it might be a good thing just to expand upon that a little bit. And again, thanks for all your work on this. It's very much appreciated.
Thank you, Councillor Lewis. Councillor Wall?
I have a couple of questions, and I have some comments to make later, so if you'll bear with me. First of all, this is not a done deal, because it's not been signed for by both parties. And I understand the reason why, but we must think we should understand that. Also, I would like to know what the actual payment would be for fifteen years on this, not counting interest or plus interest. Maybe Mr. Marcus can answer that.
Thank you for your question, Councillor Walde. The actual payment, not counting interest, would be the, you know, over fifteen years would be the purchase price divided by fifteen, which would put it slightly under one million dollars. And then the interest will be determined once we get to the point where we need to actually borrow the money. The interest rate would vary between now and then, but an indicative rate is around three percent right now.
Okay, thank you. Also, how do we go about securing a loan? Do we phone around? Do we ask for proposals from different financial agents?
That's correct, Councillor Wal. We would send an RFP out to all the financial institutions that provide those types of services in the in the city.
So those would be mostly local people?
Well, they're often responded to by their head offices out of Calgary and and Toronto, but they're from the financial institutions that are located in the city.
Okay. So, your worship, I have a few a few comments to make. While City Light and Power is a department of the city, it's always been like more like a mini Crown Corporation, like a small SAS Power that provides the basic utilities to the citizens and generates revenue greater than its expenses. And like Crown Corporations, even the city-owned corporation like Edmonton Epcore, which is owned by the city, utilities will, from time to time, need to borrow money. Like any utility corporation, Light and Power will need to finance major investments, and in this case, an expansion of the franchise area. This expansion will require borrowing, sometimes something which I'm very, very, very cautious about. I think we have to be very careful when we go into this amount of debt. But because the Light and Power finances will be self-supported, and it will be, I would, I lost my place, but because the Light and Power financing will be self-supported by additional customers, and that's around, they tell me, around four hundred customers, I will be supporting this motion, although I'm not really excited about it. I would note that the revenue, that the increased revenue will long benefit the city after the the loan is repaid. Millions and millions of dollars will be added to the revenue. I hope we take this opportunity of that next increase in the revenue to pay down some of the general debt of the city. And with that, that's all I have, your worship.
Thank you, Councillor Wal. I appreciate that. Someone else? Councillor Friesen, do you want to speak?
Sure, thanks, your worship. And I guess I echo many of the comments that Councillor Lewis and Councillor Wal have made. This is, for me, it is exciting because of the length of time that this file has been discussed and worked on. And I think back, or I I've said this before, but I certainly think we need to point out that whoever was on council in nineteen fifty eight, when the city decided to retain their own light and power utility, how grateful I am, and I'm I'm sure the citizens are, for that decision. That has provided millions and millions of dollars into our city's coffers that have allowed us to make our city the great place it is today. So I I do recognize those people, whoever they were in nineteen fifty eight, and thank them for that. And my hope is that it will be the same twenty, thirty, forty years from now, when people look back and say, oh, that council in twenty twenty one made a great decision in that, you know, we have all this additional revenue, we own our light and power utility, and so I'm certainly in favor of this. I I'm excited to see it finally come to fruition. I know it's been a long haul for councils and for our admin. I know they've worked very diligently on this, so I'm happy about that. I just maybe, Mitch, you could make a comment on that you have a statement in there about the policies, same policies and service levels regarding outages, and would you be able to speak to that just a little bit now, where it's at now and how that will improve in the future?
Sure, thank you. Thank you for the question. We strive to keep our our rates, of course, the same as as SAS Power, and we do. In, of course, because we are in a much smaller area than than the SAS Power staff that are in this area, we're able to maintain a little better service level, particularly during outages, that we can respond quicker, and and those outages are are shorter. And, you know, we pride ourselves on also maintaining our system in a in such a way that those outages are also less. And because of not having the geography that that some of their system is exposed to, that we we were able to accomplish that. So, and, you know, I've, I can attest to numerous companies that have talked to me recently, in particular, but over the years, about the attention that we give to new new businesses establishing or or renovating. In recent, there's a couple of businesses recently that are here that that are expanding, that are that the stories were that they were a year or fourteen months out from from receiving new service from utilities either in Saskatchewan or Alberta. So it provides us a lot of flexibility by having our our own utility and our own staff here to be able to respond. So it's clearly that the businesses and and citizens of Swift Current receive a a good service level from from that situation.
Thank you for that, Councillor Tundlin Weeb. Go ahead.
So I have to speak to the fact that when I campaigned, I spoke a lot about lowering the debt. What I see by lowering the debt is debt I feel the city shouldn't have taken. As Councillor Lewis said, debt is good for the right circumstances, and a smart business debt is always a good thing. So I am in favor of this. I feel it is a very good move for the city, and I know I'm going to get comments about, well, you said you were going to lower the debt. I said we would try to lower the debt, and we are doing that somewhat on another aspect. This purchase, I would call an immediate revenue generating investment, because as we take on those four hundred customers, we're receiving the benefit of having their payment made to the city. Now, is it about eighty percent of the loan of the million dollars a month that we'll be recouping immediately?
Yes, that 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 is correct. And the the remainder, the intention is to to fund through the reduction in capital investments that we've made over the years since we've come to the conclusion of our major system rebuild here with the with the work that we've accomplished in the downtown core.
So it's not really a burden to the taxpayers? This will be paying for itself up to eighty percent?
That is correct.
So is there any unseen expenses or something we don't know about? Will there be additional equipment needed of any kind, additional staff to run this?
Since we've been working on this file for a very long time, we've we've managed to analyze it very closely, and, as I said, with the completion of some of our major capital projects, we feel we're in a in a good position to take on these additional customers with no no increase of equipment or staffing.
And I think I was told that when we discussed this, that this change over or this purchase is as easy as a flip of a switch.
It 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 depends how everything is configured, but there will be no major capital investments required to make the switch over.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for those answers, Mr. Minkin, and thank you, Councillor Tundlin Weeb. Anybody else? Councillor Christensen?
Yeah, just, I I am in favor of this deal right off the bat. I think it's a it's a business decision that we have to make. I just want to get some clarity for all of our citizens. So we're talking about a fourteen point eight million dollar expenditure to buy this area. Do we have an idea of what the servicing costs are going to be over the length of that loan? A rough idea?
I can't, sorry, Councillor Christensen, I can't remember. You're talking what the interest costs were going to be?
Yeah, the the cost it's going to cost us to finance the debt or to service the debt.
I can't remember what the calculation was when when we did it a while back, but it, I know that the rate was around three percent.
If I may, I I thought it was about three point two million in.
That sounds correct.
I think that's the number we talked about, we just, we've discussed this several times, Councillor Christensen. I I believe it was right around three point two million.
Perfect. Now, this current area with the with the the customers they have, how much revenue is generated rate at this point?
Thank you for the question. Right, right today, we're close to eight hundred thousand dollars in annual revenue.
Okay. And obviously, we're buying this expecting some moderate growth, so what what are we forecasting that to be? Do we have any idea on that?
We've, we've, we've looked at at various scenarios, depending on how things go. We, you know, we've seen customer growth go over, up quickly at times in spurts, but we're using, I think, a conservative estimate would be about a half a percent for customer growth, and we are, we're kind of anticipating about two, two percent annually on rate growth. So both of those will, of course, increase that that revenue, annual revenue.
Perfect. So essentially, with the current revenue and and a little bit of light and power transfer money right now, this debt is essentially self-financed, so there are, there isn't or shouldn't be any additional stress to the taxpayer. So to me, it's just a long-term decision, business decision, that is going to self-finance itself, and city's going to benefit down the line. So, I mean, it it seems to be, you know, a fairly straightforward decision, like Leanne and a few others. I I did talk a lot about debt during the campaign, but I had, I don't have an issue with taking on debt when it's an investment. I do have an issue taking on debt when it's a a, an item that is going to keep going down in value, and and this is on the exact opposite. It is going to grow in value, so I will be supporting this.
Thank you very much, Councillor Christensen. Councillor Schweitzer, do you want to have some words?
I will be supporting this also, your worship, and I'll be supporting it because, as Councillor Christensen said, this is an investment. This isn't an appreciating asset that we're making the decision to move on today. And in my life and in my professional career, I've had the benefit of working with some amazing people in leadership roles, and many of them strive to leave what they're leading better than when they found it. And, you know, as Councillor Friesen alluded to, I feel that voting in favor of this today does that. It sets Swift Current up to be in a very, very good place for years to come. That fourteen point eight million dollar price tag, I certainly approach voting in favor of that with great humility, and it is very humbling to to be here today, making this decision, knowing all the work that's gone into this over the the past number of years. So I will be supporting. Thank you very much, your worship.
Thank you, Councillor Schweitzer. I do have a few remarks, a couple of questions. Mr. Minkin, we've talked about this fourteen point eight million dollar purchase. Could you explain to our citizens where it is? Because we we've all looked at maps, and, I mean, I could explain some if you want, and then if I miss something, you could add to it, if if that's okay. The west end of town from the Eagles out to our service center at Palace or or at at Pelche Trail, that's part of it. On the south side, the Riverview Estates is also would be added. Up behind the, we always call it up behind the hospital, but the hospital, the new school, the Meadows, that whole area, I think Canadian Tire right now is a is a City of Swift Current customer, and so is a new doctor's office, but further on than that, the dental office, the church, and all that other area is part of this. There's a quite a bit of area around the city that has virtually no customers on it or just one or two, and but those are sort of the big areas. Is that correct, Mr. Minkin?
Yes, that is, that is correct. Those areas you described are where the, you know, roughly four hundred existing customers reside with the addition of some in the Monroe industrial industrial area.
Thank you, thank you. I knew I'd missed something there. So, anyway, I I sort of answered it for you, but I hope you don't mind. I I do want to make a few comments, too, and and I know Councillor Friesen talked about nineteen fifty eight. In nineteen fifty eight, at that time, SAS Power was in the process of buying all these utilities from different cities, and other cities in our province got paid money, and they used that money to build pools and rinks and sidewalks and everything else at that time. And I don't know just how it all worked, but our forefathers here said, no, we want to keep our utility. And and I think, well, I know, I don't think, I know it's been a a great decision, and just like Councillor Friesen said, I think this decision will be good for our future. Right now, as several other councillors, Christensen, Schweitzer, Councillor Lewis, it's really not going to cost the taxpayers any more money. They're just still going to see their electrical bills come the same way. We're going to pay for this debt out of our electrical bills and out of the new customers. And so I definitely support this. When I look to the future, I know that modest modest increases of half of half a percent of of half a percent of new customers, and then, you know, two percent increases, which are going to happen, because SAS Power will keep increasing, but even if we look at things that are happening around us, like our federal government has said, by thirty-five, I believe, they don't want to see any more gas-powered vehicles sold in Canada. And whether you agree or disagree, and and I think they're being rather optimistic, but we are, we we will be seeing a lot more electric cars. And with electric cars is going to become more consumption of electricity. And we have a nice electrical plant outside of the city. SAS Power's going to have to build a few more of them if we start getting more electric cars, but I see great growth, and I'm definitely going to be supporting this. And I do want to echo especially what Councillor Lewis said. I want to thank past councils, and I was going to say past administrations, but this administration also for all all the work that they have done. I could name names, but I guarantee I'd forget someone. I mean, we could, it's easy right now. I'm looking at Tim and Mitch here, that's easy, but Matt Noble, councillor, mayor's before us, Mayor Perrow, Mayor Schaefer, Mayor Sandy, and it just goes on and on. So, anyway, I want to thank all those. So without any further ado, I would like to call for the questions here. Okay. This was moved by Councillor Lewis and seconded by Councillor Friesen. All those in favor, please raise your hand. This motion is passed. Thank you. Now, our second item to be presented by the General Manager of Community Services, Mr. Jones, please proceed.
Good afternoon, your worship and members of council. The subject of this report is the multifunctional fieldhouse, green and inclusive community buildings program. In two thousand and nine, the City of Swift Current started the planning process necessary to explore the potential for a to explore the potential for a multi-functional leisure facility that could accommodate recreational, cultural, sport, and fitness activities beneficial to all users. Although the grant has never been realized, the project remains shovel-ready and awaits the opportunity to access community culture and recreation infrastructure granting assistance. In two thousand and nine, this grant was called the Canada Works Building Canada Fund. In two thousand and twenty, the grant was called Investing in Canada Infrastructure Grant Program, ICIP. And in two thousand and twenty-one, the federal grant available is the Green and Inclusive Community Buildings Program Assistance Grant. The Government of Canada announced up to one point five billion dollars in federal funding over five years to establish this granting program. The program would support retrofits, repairs, or upgrades of existing publicly accessible community buildings that assist underserved and high-need communities across Canada. These structures and spaces are at the heart of community vitality, and they are places where Canadians gather, access essential services, and learn and play. Play is a meaningful role in fostering inclusion in society and combating systemic inequalities. As part of the ongoing process, administration is currently applying for funding consideration from the Green and Inclusive Community Buildings Program. This program is a national merit-based program with the objective of improving the availability and condition of community buildings in Canadian communities experiencing higher needs and who are currently underserved. This grant program is intended to stimulate the economy, create good job opportunities, and align to the goals of Canada's Strength and Climate Plan, advancing the Government of Canada's climate priorities by improving energy efficiency, reducing greenhouse gas emissions, and enhancing the climate resilience of community buildings. The city of Swift Current would be targeting dollars in the large retrofit project category with the range in size from three million dollars to twenty-five million in total eligible costs. The municipal tax portion of the twenty-five million ineligible costs would be up to twelve million dollars of the twenty-five million dollar project. Selections of projects for funding will be based on eligibility criteria and the competitive evaluation of applications using merit criteria. The project must be implemented no earlier than April first, two thousand and twenty-one, and no later than March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six. All applicants must commit to securing the necessary capital to proceed if approved for the federal funding and must meet or exceed the highest published accessibility standards as defined by the requirements in the Canadian Standard Association Technical Standard, Accessible Design for the Build Environment, CANCSA. Council would agree to fund the municipal share of the project by using debt for the principal and interest. Municipal taxes would then fund the ongoing operation and maintenance costs of the facility. To apply for funding, a council resolution in support of the proposed project must be passed. Therefore, it is respectfully recommended that council supports the development of a phased approach to the completion of the integrated fieldhouse and that administration be directed to apply for grant funding through the Green and Inclusive Community Buildings Grant. Council agrees to meet the terms and conditions of the relevant program, to conduct an open tendering process to manage the construction of the project, and to follow any federal and provincial environmental legislation and standards. Council deems phase one of this project to include a completion of a fieldhouse and atrium area and to fund the municipal share by debt with the ongoing operations and maintenance costs funded by way of municipal taxes.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Counsel, I would be looking for a motion.
Worship, I'll move that we support the development of a phased approach to the completion of the integrated fieldhouse and that admin be directed to apply for grant funding through the Green and Inclusive Community Buildings Grant with the details as outlined in the report.
Thank you, Counselor Friesen, the seconder.
I'll second that, your worship.
Thank you, Counselor Schweitzer. Now, counsel, questions or comments on this one? Who wants to start? Counselor Friesen, you moved it, you want to start off, because I'm sure there'll be lots of discussion here.
Yes, I'm sure there will be, your worship. And again, this is one of these opportunities that we may not get very often, the way I understand it. And so to be able to apply, to get this funding, and if you look at the numbers, it's almost fifty percent of the project would be covered with government funding. And as we all know, it's all taxpayer money, but we might as well try to get our share. So it's one that I will be supporting. I know it means, again, that we could be needing more debt. But again, I'm looking at the long-term benefits to the citizens of our city. And it's, this is something we've heard over and over again, that people are looking for, young families are looking for. And I think we owe it to them to at least try for the funding. There's no guarantees that this, that we will get the funding, but I think we do need to try. I have a couple of questions. One would be, this is talking about a fieldhouse, and I know that original project included the aquatic center and a fieldhouse, et cetera. So would this be, like, we're saying it's phase one, so then phase two would eventually be an aquatic center? Is that how we're approaching this?
Thank you very much for the question, Counselor Friesen. This was originally, when this opportunity first come out, it was about a month ago, and we had to start planning on what we had to do. So when we looked at the funding of an aquatic center, the costs that came through for it were just about thirty million dollars that we were going to have to do, where the cost of a fieldhouse was under twenty-five million. It was around twenty-three and change that it was projected at. When we looked at the big picture, we looked at in the community and tried to look at what we would need. And the two ones that came up that we felt, Mr. Marcus and myself originally, that was going to be a fieldhouse or an aquatic center. So basically, when we felt that we could probably get a standalone fieldhouse for under twenty-five million, that that would be the one that we would make the application for. The hardest part about this grant, because you have to include as much green initiative as you possibly can, that's going to cost a lot more money than what we would have traditionally done. And I haven't got that final from P three A yet, but I'm supposed to have it by five o'clock today. But I've told them that we would not go over the twenty-five million, which is the maximum of this grant application.
So then, would it be designed in such a way that we could add an aquatic center to that area? And would it be in the location that was previously designated, beside All Saints Catholic School?
Thanks again for the question. We are using that same location. It would not be, at this point in time, a phaseable project. It would be built standalone, but with the ability to phase, but not. Because a lot of the phaseable options or opportunities that are in a build, if we were able to get funding, I would predict, and that's just me predicting, is that we probably are not going to get an opportunity for a grant like this for the next five years at least. In fact, when we look at originally, when we went to the ISIP grant, it was over ten years before we got that. We've had some, with COVID and the pandemic, we've had lots of opportunities to get infrastructure moving again and rest. But I think that's going to come to an end. So Mr. Marcus, in initiating this through me, said it's, we need to apply for it and then council can decide on what we want to do with it. But we need to keep pitching, and that's kind of where we're at. And it would be in that location unless something happened if we were found. When we make the application, we had a lot of this original footwork done with regards to environmental impact studies that we wouldn't have to fund again because they're from that same location. And of course, that's huge in green initiatives as well too, so.
Can I ask me one more question? Okay, and the other question I had was, this is roughly fifty-fifty funding with the federal government and the city. This is how it's proposed. Is there any hope or opportunity that the Saskatchewan government would partake in this grant as they sometimes do with some of these initiatives?
I can't comment on that, Counselor Friesen, I don't know that. I guess the lobbying effect could start if we had the opportunity, but right at this point in time, it is a federal grant, not a provincial grant.
Thank you for those questions, Counselor Friesens, or Friesen, not Friesens, but the questions. And thank you, Mr. Jones, for your answers. Counselor Tuntman Weeb, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mr. Jones, for bringing this proposal forward. I'm just reading here that this program also supports retrofits and repairs of existing community buildings. But our aquatic center is not eligible for this, correct?
Thank you very much for the question, Counselor Tuntman Weeb. It is eligible, it would be eligible, aquatic centers are eligible. There were other ones we were looking at as well, is we felt that the top three for inclusion, when Mr. Marcus and I were speaking, would be an aquatic center, a fieldhouse, and a fire hall. The fire hall does not meet the qualifications for this grant because, basically, the federal government said that it doesn't. So it came down to, again, to the aquatic center and otherwise. We could apply for smaller dollars for an aquatic center. Because we only had a month to go, we decided that we would apply for what we thought would be the most value to the city, and that would be the most value. And that we thought, over time, with the support of council, that we could upgrade the aquatic center to where we needed it for a lot of our own money in-house, and that was our reasoning for that.
But this, our aquatic center as it is now, isn't accessible for everybody. So isn't that why, like, we can't use money towards that?
No, not necessarily, it would be that we would have to. Like, if we decided that we wanted to make it accessible and that we wanted to make it green with solar panels, with wider doorways and all the rest of that, that would be funded as part of that. But again, it was trying to maximize the dollars that we had for what our application would be.
So are there plans that we can see of the fieldhouse and the atrium, or that the public can see on the website?
At five o'clock today, I'm supposed to have some rendering pictures from P three A. And then, basically, what we did is we looked at Moose Jaw's Soccer Center on their standalone, and we looked at what they had. When we looked at theirs, I believe, and I don't have the exact numbers, but their numbers were somewhere in the ten to twelve million on what it cost them, and maybe that is even high. A lot of you would tell, would tell you that have been there, that it's a kind of bare-bones facility, but it's still a standalone facility there that could accommodate a lot of what we need. So that's kind of where, we'd probably be, from talking to P three A, we're probably going to be somewhere in that, I would say fifteen to twenty-five million, as he's going to come back with. And then I would have the rendering. But we ask for a full-size soccer facility, up to five dressing rooms, a coaching room, a walking track, and some type of spectator area is what we're at. We were not asking for any type of fitness center because we have enough fitness centers within the community that are providing that service right now, so.
And we know the residents want that for the city. I just have one more question. Some of the ongoing operations and maintenance costs are going to be funded by way of municipal taxes. Aren't there some plans in the works to, if we get this, to help offset taxpayers with operations and maintenance, shuffling around of staff or retiring existing older rec centers or buildings?
I hope I'm answering the question as you're putting it, but there is a lot of benefits to having more than a standalone facility, that's without question. Because with regards to staffing and keeping it open during some slower times or shoulder seasons, at least you've got staff on the site. Originally, before my time, this was a location that the community and councillors felt was going to be a location that it could be there. We're taking advantage of it in a grant format because we have a lot of that work done and we had either a month or less than a month to submit an application. So I agree with you that there is the possibility that maybe in another location, you could probably save dollars with regards to staffing, just simply based on being more local. Like, if you were to put it in the Kinetic Park area or somewhere where we already have stuff going. But at this point in time, it was thought a standalone soccer facility that may be added on to it in that same location otherwise could, or that we would have some other opportunity for other land location in the future.
And I was thinking, I'm thinking of the Lieutenant Colonel Rec Center, the Clifton Rec Center. Will that still be available to the public, or are we going to look at doing something else with that?
We're going to have to come to some type of conclusion or recommendation or with regards to Lieutenant Clifton moving on, because the dollars that we're putting into it are just basically keeping it the same we are, and it is an older building. So at some point in time, what we were hoping and what we were moving towards is when we bought the Dixon Community Center and moved a lot of our projects to there, we thought that when we actually had to not use Lieutenant Colonel Clifton, that we would move a lot of those individuals to the Dixon Community Center and then decommission Lieutenant Clifton. But that, again, becomes the council for a decision that they have to make when it's a decision that it can't be operated anymore, so.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
You're welcome.
Thank you for all those questions and answers. Counselor Wall?
Yes, thank you, they'll be very short and sweet, your worship. So you're asking us to approve your application? So if the application is accepted, do we then have to go ahead with the project?
Thank you for your question, Counselor Wall. What we're doing is, part of this whole process for the grant is a resolution from council saying that if we are approved for the funding, that we would partner with the federal government in this funding.
Thank you. We just, we're going to borrow fifteen million dollars for SaaS Power, and now we want to add another twelve to, almost another twelve, thirteen billion. SaaS Power was a need, and this is a want, in my opinion, and I will not support it. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you, Counselor Wall. Counselor Schweitzer, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you very much, your worship. Many of my questions have been answered already. It does sound like this is a somewhat rare opportunity that's presenting itself here. I also had the question of what's included, it sounds like a beautiful soccer pitch, which is nice. Assuming that this goes forward today and we vote in favor of, I want to ask about the application process. Is that something that we'd be able to handle internally with our staff here? Or would be looking at bringing in consultants and experts in this area?
Thank you, Counselor Schweitzer, for the question. It's actually, the process for this is that when grant opportunities come forward to this, is usually the C O, Mr. Marcus, gets it first. And then, basically, what he does in the area that the general manager is in charge of is he basically huddles with them and says, okay, what should we or what can we do? In this situation, because it was so quick and because it involved so many green initiatives, which we don't have a whole lot of expertise in, we actually looked to a Nookville, Ontario company to see what it would cost the city to do up the application. And again, based only on if we were to get the grant, that we would have to pay them. And the application for that grant would have cost between seven hundred thousand and one point two million if we were acceptable on a twenty-five million dollar project. So basically, he asked if we would take it on. So the only dollars that we have invested into this right now would be what we're paying P three A to come up with some renderings on a potential for it. We do have renderings on a potential for, that were provided last year by P three A with regards to an aquatic center and fieldhouse. And these would be the only expenses we have so far. And Counselor Wall is exactly right. This is a big ask, but I said, at the end of the day, when Mr. Marcus and I sat down, we still say that these grants are available, we need to pitch them, and then it needs to be a council decision if you move forward on it or not. If you decide not to move forward on it, at least we've given you the information that you need to require to make those decisions, so.
Thank you, Counselor Schweitzer, and Mr. Jones, again, thank you. Counselor Christensen?
Yeah, this one's a really tough one for me, to be honest with you. I'm going to ramble a little bit on both sides of the issue because I still haven't really made up my mind, to be honest with you. This is one project that going in, coming onto council, I truly wanted to make happen, a fieldhouse. I thought that was something that was needed in our community. I thought it was something that we could accomplish. The timing isn't the best right now, obviously, with some of the decisions we've had to make today and in the last few council meetings, but we don't always get to control the timing. to control the timing. Like I say, I, I really want this to happen. I just have some reservations. I, I struggle with the lack of time we've had to gather info to make an informed decision. Being neutered at council, I, a couple of our members have been here through the, for the previous go-around with the integrated facility. So I haven't seen plans for, for this field house. I don't, I don't think we have an accurate cost on construction and operation yet. I think that's a little bit unknown. So we're not really sure how much we're committing to add to our debt level, you know, with a clear understanding of the structure we're approving. In the past, we follow a certain strategy, a certain strategy in the city to fund a lot of medium and smaller ticket items through debt. And that handcuffs us a little bit, I think, in making a decision on this facility. I also have, you've, you've answered some of these, Jim. I, I also have concerns when I read about a phased approach to the completion of an integrated field house and phase one of this project, using those terms in there. Because I'm, I'm definitely not in favor of this huge integrated facility because, quite frankly, it's out of our scope. It'll be out of our scope for generations to come. It's, you know, when we're talking a $200 million price tag, I think they, they gave us during the last session talks. It just can't be done. I would love to be able to say it could, but it can't. In all honesty, I've had, I've had a couple sleepless nights trying to come to a decision on this, and, and I'm still undecided. Like I say, personally, I really want this facility. I believe a case can be made that it is, that, that our city does have a need for it. I just struggle with the timing, the clarity on the structure. We're being asked to approve, struggle greatly with adding more debt load to it. So I, you know, I wonder, do you hold off and get a clearer understanding of the project and its cost before we make a commitment? You know, it's, it's funding that doesn't always come around, but it will again at some point. I don't know whether I want to wait that long. Or do we approve the grant process right now, and because it's available and, and we try to seek some clarity and move through the process, as we move through the process, and continue to look for savings? Either way, at some point, I really want to provide this facility for our citizens, who I believe will make great use of it. And a great many people want this, you know, but at what cost? So, you know, I'm, I'm still struggling with that based on where we're at. So I don't know whether I'm supporting it yet at this point. And I hate to be that indecisive, but, like I say, I, I want this facility. This is, this was one of the things I talked about in the election. I think it's, it's something I really want to do, but I'm struggling with the timing. So I guess I'll, I'll vote when the times come, but.
If I could, Counselor Christensen, you've kind of captured a lot of things that I've been feeling, even the sleepless nights on this one, and everybody around the table have, have, have got lots of good points. Now, Counselor Pluus, did you want to add anything to this, or?
Yeah, thanks, Your Worship. I, I guess, like everybody else, have been kind of, this is a difficult, difficult decision for a council. I got notes all over the place, like Counselor Christensen. I think I got things all over on, trying to organize it as best I can here. And it seems like my own brain runs down rabbit holes all the time, and then I go off on a tangent and come up with a bunch of other things that I think I still need to think about. But, you know, I, I agree for sure that the, you know, the time that we get on these, not just this grant application, but, you know, the, the pathway one as well, they just, you know, they get, it's so sudden. And, you know, it does feel like there's not a lot of time to, for council anyway, to, to really come to terms with, with all sides of this. I know admins, obvious, you know, obviously had a bit more time, and you guys, this is what you do every day. So you've, you've had more time to sit and think about this. And, you know, we have to rely on that to a certain extent. And I'm, I'm totally comfortable with our admin team and what they're bringing to us. I, you know, I guess some of the things, unfortunately, this isn't a very well-structured thought, so I'm just gonna ramble. But some of the things I've been kind of running through is, you know, I, and I had mentioned before, that aquatics would have been my first choice in terms of a facility. However, you know, the constraints of, of what we can do and, what we think we can do with our current facility as well, leaves me in a comfortable spot with a field house being the, you know, the best decision in terms of, of a grant application in this case. I do not really hear a lot from the citizens of Swift Current, honestly, about good things or bad things as city council. But I do often hear about this, you know, the need for recreation facilities in, in our community. And, and, you know, whether it's a, a need or a want, I think, you know, obviously, from a black and white perspective, it's a want. From a gray perspective of, you know, looking a little bit deeper, maybe in terms of just the perspective I've got, in terms of, you know, I've got three kids who are at the age where they would be able to use this, and probably by the time it was constructed, I might not get all three kids through that facility. But there's a lot of young families in our community who would. And, you know, there's a lot of people that I know who would love to have this facility in our community. There's a lot of people, you know, that are young families that would love to use it for, for soccer. Soccer is certainly, probably, the most popular activity in our community at this point in time next to hockey in the winter. We have facilities for hockey in the winter. We don't really have facilities for this that are indoor. I mean, we do, we've, we've done the best we can with those sorts of things in the past. But this would be, this would be something that's, you know, that's really well-suited for, for what the need is, I think. You know, I, like Counselor Friesen, thought, you know, boy, it would be nice, not, and I agree, the integrated facility, the price tag on that is, you know, it's, it's difficult to come to terms with. So, you know, likely, we're looking at, if we want to have these facilities, we're looking at building them sort of one at a time. And ideally, I would hope that we might be able to attach them to other things in time and experience some savings. If we're able to, to look at those as being a possibility in the future, I think that would just make sense from a, from a cost perspective and a maintenance perspective, as well as, you know, having the whole idea with having things integrated in the first place was that you could, you know, if it was connected to long-term care or the hospital, you could really use those sorts of facilities and, and improve the lives of those folks who maybe don't have the opportunity to get outside as much and don't have the mobility to, to do that. So, yeah, I mean, I, I think that, I think there is a need, when you look at it in terms of the grayscale in our community, for something like this. You know, was it a need in terms of, you know, flushing toilets and running water and those sorts of things? No. But I do think it's something that we, we do need to have in our community if we want our community to, to stay the shining jewel of the Southwest, that it is. More time, of course, would have been great, but we don't have more time. We have an opportunity to fund something that I think we've heard from our community that they want, that they say that we need. And as a representative of that community, I'm gonna have to go with that and say that I think that, that is something that we should support. You know, the, the top edge of this is a $12 million funding from residents just in the city of Swift Current. Might be less, as you say, if the facility comes back. And again, more time would have told us that, but we don't have more time. So we, all we know is that the maximum is $12 million for the city of Swift Current. Maybe it's less. Maybe we'll have an opportunity to have provincial funding contribute to this. We don't know that. More time might have told us, but we don't have more time. So, you know, I'm looking at our maximum exposure here. I'm looking at what our need is. I'm looking at the time we have to make this decision. And I'm looking at this as a, a very rare opportunity to get dollars from another level of government because, frankly, this is, does not happen if we don't have dollars from another level of government. It's an absolute must if we're gonna build any of these facilities. We need to have that participation. And the, the opportunities that we've had for participation are very few and very far between. I've been here for a while, and this is the best opportunity we've had. So I think, you know, looking at things from where I'm at, you know, with a young family and other folks who, you know, I'm looking to the future as to how long we're gonna be able to, to use this facility. And it's $12 million, you know, obviously, plus the maintenance and, you know, we have to run it and all of those sorts of things. But, you know, I honestly think that this is probably our best opportunity to do something like this. And I think that people in our community are, are asking us for this. It's too bad, again, that we don't have the results of our community input from our strategic planning, because I think that would be very interesting to hear. But I, I do believe that there are, there's a significant part of our community that would use this facility. I know even folks, you know, like my parents' age, my dad walks a ton. And in the winter, he would probably go here and walk instead of, you know, I think they go to the, you know, they're, they're walking outside when it's nice. They're walking at the, the eye plaques around the outside of the rink, which, I mean, isn't the ideal for anybody. But, you know, they're, they're making the best of, of what they can. And, and, you know, this would give those people a good opportunity as well. You know, and, and then, when it comes to terms, when it comes to talking about debt, you know, this, this council on our last budget, we did see debt go down. That was the result of some different decisions. But it was also the result of a plan that was put into place several years ago, of a financial strategy to reduce our reliance on debt. And I, I do believe that we will continue to see debt be used more appropriately in the city moving forward for those exact things that, that Counselor Christensen talked about, things that aren't depreciating assets, things that serve the entirety of that term of debt that we're taking. You know, debt is a tool, as I mentioned before, but debt is a tool that needs to be used correctly, and it needs to be used at the right time. And sometimes, Counselor Wall's right, it needs to not be used. And you need to say no. I don't personally think that this is that, that time. And for all of the many rambling reasons now that I've mentioned, I think I've come to the conclusion that this is something that, that this council should support and that I will be supporting as a member of it. So, thanks, Your Worship.
Thank you very much, Counselor Pluus, for your ramblings. It's okay. I think there's a few ramblings around here today. And if you will allow me to ramble a bit also. This short turnaround, tremendous pressure from the feds on, on us today, but on admin. I mean, you have a whole, you had a month, is that correct? You had a month to. This is a big decision. I mean, maybe if you're in Ottawa and you're spending $12 million, it's not such a big decision. But for Swift Current, that's big. If you're in Toronto, $12 million, they'd spend that in an afternoon paying wages, I think, in Toronto. But for us, it's a huge decision. And to have the federal government put this pressure on us, and it, and it happens. I mean, it'd be nice if it didn't, but it does. And the ISIP wasn't quite as bad, but this one, this one is. And I had a couple of questions for you, Mr. Jones. I know you'd mentioned soccer, but could this facility, a field house, I mean, could we use it for volleyball, basketball, training for fastball, baseball, all those things? It's not strictly soccer. Is that correct?
Thank you very much for the, the question, Mayor Bridle. You're exactly correct. Is we have a lot of, when we talk about a, a large soccer pitch, it would be divisible by four by curtains, so that we could have drop-in basketball, we could have volleyball. Volleyball is one of the fastest-growing community sports here right now. And, and we are looking at that. And again, it comes to prime time and what you can use in prime time and what's reasonable to use. And again, what we can use for schools. Are we gonna be able to go back to being able to rent the school gymnasiums like we have before in and around the school sports times? That's one thing that we're still waiting to find out here this fall too, as well too. But no, absolutely, it would not be just for that. And that's just one area that would be a soccer pitch that we could play against other communities and be a true soccer pitch, not one similar like we've been able to make at Stockade and, and in the schools.
Thank you very much for that. And then, I know, like, it's been a short turnaround, but I'm gonna ask you a couple, a couple of questions too. Operational costs. What kind of operational costs, like, when you looked at Moose Jaw, what are they operating their building at? It's a similar-sized building to what that, that's the, is it the Yarra Centre? Is that what you call it in Moose Jaw? And what kind of operational costs would, could we expect from something like this?
That's, that's hard to pin down on. There's a lot of things that are there. But like, when you look at, and, and again, because this would have all the, the green initiatives, which would be cogeneration possibility. So I'm waiting to see what P3A comes in because I told them that if you're not going to put in to exceed the standards of this grant, then I said, we're not even gonna put it in. Because our chances of even being considered for it without putting in potential for cogeneration, which is putting the heat back into the dressing rooms to solar panels and the rest of it, then we're not even gonna do that. So I said, told them to do that. I have not got what the cost for operating would be at this point in time. I have made that request to the Director of Recreation for the city of Moose Jaw, but I haven't got it yet on what theirs, theirs is, so.
Okay, well, I was gonna say, thanks, but thanks for nothing if I hadn't answered. So, I mean, no, no, I don't mean that like that. But, yeah, I was just curious what they were operating costs. And then if we do, if we do borrow this money, I mean, I know I, I ran on, on, on not borrowing more money either. And yet, I look at this, just like, I mean, this is something I really want. And, and like many of us said, but Counselor Pluus just talked about, this is going to be something that so many of our citizens are gonna use. And yet, our debt, I mean, this year, I believe, are we paying down approximately $5 million in debt this year is, is off the existing debt. So we'll take it down to around that $80 million, and then, and then we add this. And that's definitely something hard, hard to swallow. But that debt, Mr. Marcus, if you have $12 million in debt at 3%, what, what would that cost us a year to service and to, and to pay the interest on? Would that also be about a million or 1.1 a year extra?
Thank you, Mayor Bridle. It would actually depend on the term. And traditionally, we would take that over a longer term. So we'd be, say, looking at 25 years, which is still less than the life of the asset. So the payments probably with interest would be around, I'll say, $700,000 a year, Mark.
So percentage of our existing taxes, would that be like a, a 5% increase in taxes to cover that, or a 3%? If you can use your quick mathematical mind there, it's...
About 2.5.
About 2.5%. So a 2.5% tax increase from our existing 19.3 million right now in order to fund something like that. Is that correct? I, I have no further questions. But I do the one comment, this does not come along very often where they offer us this money. And whether we get chosen or not is another thing. And this does have to be done by 2026. Is that started by 2026 or complete by 2026?
Sorry, that is complete by 2026.
Complete by 2026. So, I mean, if the citizens don't like the decision that I make today, and they can, they can have a plebiscite with me because I am going to be voting for this because it is something that I believe many of our citizens want. I'd like to see here. And it is a tough choice. And Mr. Wall, our Counselor Wall, I understand where you're coming from, because I have been waffling on this for the week and a half or two weeks that I've heard about it. Just like Counselor Christensen, I'm not sure if you're waffling, but I definitely have been waffling on this. So without further ado, oh, yes, go right ahead if there's...
Sorry, Jim. You had made mention that you weren't looking at the fitness center. And it, I slipped my mind when I was talking, because I was rambling all over the place. But I know the Yarra Centre has a fitness center in the, in the top floor of their, front of their building. Is there a reason why we wouldn't do it? And, and not that we would want to invest the money into putting the, the stuff in, but could we be a tenant and actually rent the area out to, and I, I ask that based on one of the local fitness centers making a comment saying that they might be interested in going into a building like that. So it might be a little bit more of a revenue generator. So I don't, like I say, without seeing the plans, which I haven't, I don't know whether we have that double floor up at the front of this building and, and whether that's even a possibility. But it, it is something to keep in mind, just...
I, I can answer a part of your question, Counselor Christensen. The original fitness facility that was designed in... The original fitness facility that was designed in there was a facility to be designed in partnership with the Health Authority for patients that were doing rehabilitation. It wasn't a true fitness facility, it had special equipment in it to allow people to rehabilitate from their operations in the hospital. We can still take a look at that, it was never designed as being or set in stone as a city-operated facility. It was just a facility to allow people to, I'll say, acquire a better level of health through their rehabilitation. But it could serve as a fitness facility as well if someone was interested in operating it.
Anybody else for a final comment here? I know many of you have talked, myself included, at great length. But if there's no more comments, this was moved by Counselor Friesen and seconded by Counselor Schweitzer. All those in favor, please raise your hands. All those opposed, this motion has passed.
Your Worship, I would like that noted in the minutes that I oppose it.
It will be so noted. Thank you very much for your time and your thoughts on this one. Now, Mr. Jones, please proceed with your next report.
Thank you, Your Worship, and members of council. The subject of this report is the Canada Community Revitalisation Fund, CCRF, Community Inclusive Accessibility Playground Project. Accessibility standards have been in place for many years in Canada with the goal of creating equitable, barrier-free access to communities, workplaces, and services for people with disabilities. In 2011, the City of Swift Current community service began with the initial approach of retrofitting ACT Park to provide enhanced accessibility playground features in our community. ACT Park was completed in 2014, although a great park, since its development designs and standards have improved to provide enhanced concepts and structures for opportunities of play. According to a Canadian survey on disability, an estimated three point seven percent of Canadians under the age of fifteen years have at least one disability that limits their activities of daily living. The 2016 Swift Current census notes that there are five thousand five hundred and fifty children under the age of fifteen. This means that approximately two hundred and five children in our community live with a disability. The Government of Canada recently announced the Canada Community Revitalisation Fund, CCRF, to help communities across Canada build and improve community infrastructure projects so they can rebound from the effects of COVID-19 pandemic. With a national investment of five hundred million over two years, the fund's purpose is to support non-for-profit organizations, municipalities, and other community groups, as well as indigenous communities to assist with community vitality, support social and economic cohesion, and help reanimate communities across Canada. It is highly documented that parks and green spaces provide benefits, such as helping to build strong families and healthy communities. Parks are places where Canadians gather, access essential services, learn, and play. Play holds a meaningful role in fostering inclusion in society and combating systemic inequalities. As part of the ongoing process, administration is always looking for and applying for funding to help support and develop new recreational opportunities in our community. The City of Swift Current would like to apply for the CCRF to target dollars to help fund a new inclusive accessibility park in our community. The CCRF will provide support for projects that are involved in adapting and reimagining, re-envisioning community spaces and maintaining accessibility standards so that they may safely be used by communities in accordance with social distancing and local public health guidelines to help revitalize areas and support future planning efforts. Eligible projects include increasing accessibility to public spaces for everyone to enjoy inclusive of people with disabilities. Selections of projects for funding will be based on meeting eligible criteria and the competitive evaluation of applications using merit criteria. The project must be implemented no earlier than April nineteenth, 2021, and no later than March thirty-first, 2023. All applicants must commit to securing the necessary capital to proceed if approved for federal funding. Funding requests can be up to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars and are on a seventy-five percent cost share, with the city being required to put up a minimum of twenty-five percent, which on seven hundred and fifty thousand would be one eighty-seven, five hundred. To proceed with the grant application, council would agree to fund the municipal share of the project by using debt or local sponsorship. Remaining funds required to complete the project would be then phased and budgeted in the 2022, 2023 capital budgets respectfully, with municipal taxes funding the ongoing maintenance costs of this facility. The city has been in discussions with the province to acquire the former Palliser Care Centre site off of Gladstone Street West and Central Avenue South. This three point seven acre parcel adjacent to the current one acre green space the city owns provides a perfect opportunity for the community of an inclusive accessibility playground. To apply for funding, a council resolution in support of this proposed project must be passed. Therefore, it is respectfully recommended that council supports the development of an inclusive accessibility park and playground and that administration be directed to apply for grant funding through the Canada Community Grant Revitalisation Fund. Council agrees to meet the terms and conditions of the relevant program by allocating land to the said project, cost share the project funding in a minimum of twenty-five percent to conduct an open tendering process to manage the construction of the project and to allow any federal and provincial environmental legislation and standards.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jones, for that report. Council, I will be looking for a motion.
Your Worship, I move that council supports the development of an inclusive accessibility park and that administration be directed to apply for grant funding through the Canadian Community Grant Revitalisation Fund. Council agrees to meet the terms and conditions of the relevant program by allocating land to the said project, cost share the project funding in a minimum of twenty-five percent to conduct an opening, open tendering process to manage the construction of the project and to follow any federal and provincial environmental legislation and standards.
Thank you, Counselor Schweitzer, and a seconder?
I'll second that, Your Worship.
I was looking the other way there, sorry, Counselor Tuntland Weep. Thank you. Now, council, would you like to speak on this? I see your mic on there, Counselor Schweitzer.
Just a question for Mr. Jones. In your report, it states that the old Palliser Care Site is the destination of choice here. Swift Current has an abundance of beautiful green spaces, and I've always said that that's our sword in the stone. And what makes us a great community is our playgrounds and green spaces. What was the decision-making process and why did you land on this spot in particular?
Thank you very much for the question, Counselor Schweitzer. This area on the south side is an area that we've actually been looking at. And we were approached last year about the potential to purchase it or whatever. So it's been on our radar for some time. We've actually looked at, since our budget deliberations last year, in comments that Counselor Pluas had made with regards to an inclusive playground. We were looking at a playground that could be standalone as opposed to trying to retrofit another playground to it. We already have ACT, that is. But we see it as a potential for a destination park that people would come to. With that, you would probably need a small parking lot, because it is a destination park. Plus, you would need extra wide cubicles for people that are bringing potential children with disabilities or adult with disabilities to do it. But it also needs to be for the general public to use, because that's the most possible. And it's also the best way to include people with disabilities. So I think that's kind of what we've been looking at. We've been working with Mr. Marcus and Marty on this to try to see if it would work or whatever. And we're in negotiations right now, so that's about as much as I can say about that, so.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jones and Counselor Schweitzer. Counselor Wall?
Yes, I'm seeing that we have one acre at the, by the Palliser area. Is that not enough to cover for the playground?
Thank you very much for the question, Counselor Wall. We actually have, some of our engineers are doing a conceptual design right now. When we looked at it, we compared to Saskatoon, the John Dolan Inclusive Park right now. And also in Calgary, there's the St. Thomas Aquinas one. And those ones run probably somewhere in the area around two point five to three acres, depending on what the design would be. So we've asked, Curtis Schwartz is actually making us a mock design up to try to see what it would be based on that whole inclusive package. But if we were able to purchase that lot, then that one acre that we have already purchased, we could do whatever we wanted on it. So if there was some type of other development that wanted to go on there to help support the cost of that, that would be fine as well too. And again, that's council's decisions.
Yeah, would that, one acre, would that be available then for selling as lots for houses?
I believe Mr. Marcus would probably know better than I, but I believe we could use that one acre for whatever we like.
I can comment on that for you, Counselor Wall. Certainly, we could, there is the potential for development for residential of any kind there. We just need some rezoning, and certainly funds from that could be directed towards supporting the overall development of the park on the remaining property.
Those lots, would they be a hundred feet deep? The property would be a hundred feet deep?
I'm not sure of the dimensions of the piece of property, but we would have to take a look at how we would define that area into residential lots, if that's what we were going to do.
So that would be one way then to create some revenue to pay for this as well?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Counselor Wall, if I could, I have looked at that. And I didn't, I just looked on the map I had, and I'm sure those lots would be at least a hundred and fifteen feet deep. And I've looked along, it's Gibbs Street there, and I thought the same thing. And if we developed that into eight or nine residential lots, if we, like, we'd have to change the zoning there. But right across the street, it's residential. And I just saw it'd be another nice spot. We own it right now, we could put residential lots on it now without purchasing this or without putting the park there. But if we did put some residential lots in there and sell them, and that would definitely go towards paying or helping to pay for this. That was one of my thought processes.
Thank you, and I see this as a need, so I will be supporting this motion.
Thank you, Counselor Wall. Counselor Friesen, go ahead.
Thanks, Your Worship. And I really like Counselor Wall's idea about the residential lots there. I think that's something we should be definitely exploring or looking into. I certainly support this application. And again, if I'm reading this correctly, we're not assured that we are going to get this money. But hopefully, we do. So I'm just wondering, the land there is way more than we would need for a accessible playground apparatus. So what else would be there? Is it trails or, like, what else would be in this park besides the playground part of it?
Thank you for the question, Counselor Friesen. Again, that's to be determined, based on what the footprint of that whole park is. There's lots of mature trees that are in that location right now that we would like to use the best of our ability. And that's kind of what we've asked the engineer to draw up for us, something that might be able to use some of it. That doesn't say it has to be like that, but I get a better idea on a conceptual design when I actually see an outlay of it and I can see what it's doing there. But traditionally, those locations in other playgrounds are using that footprint of somewhere between two point five to three acres. So basically, we've talked extensively with the John Dolan Inclusive Playground in Saskatoon, because that fits closest to our home. Their total cost for their playground was somewhere around five hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Now, that was two years ago that they started with that, so it maybe have gone up in price too. But, so that's kind of what our footprint is. If we find that it's not seven hundred and fifty thousand, that we're potentially maybe design it, maybe less. But we wanted to apply for, again, the maximum amount of grant funding that was available. And how that footprint looks, if we were able to purchase that land, I'm not just sure yet. But we would have something as we move forward on that for council's approval.
Thanks for that, and just another quick comment. And that would be, it seems to me that there is a little bit of a shortage of parks on the south side of our city. And so I like the idea of having it over in that old Palliser spot and adding another park to that side of the city. I think that would be great for the citizens over there.
Thank you, Counselor Friesen. Counselor Tuntland Weep?
I agree with you, Counselor Friesen. I've had many people on the south side talking to me about how the south side is forgotten about, and there's not much over there. And then I remind them all that they do have, and they're okay with it, but it would be nice to have another park. I came in cranky this morning after reading all this and all the debt that we're going to accumulate. Now I just have a really bad headache. But, so, this is a need to me. We need a one hundred percent accessible playground in the city if we're going to be all-inclusive and include everybody and do what we can for everyone. So to me, this is a need. It's bad timing for debt, but this is a debt that I can swallow. When I had asked about this property, when I was campaigning it, I was told that the government wanted way too much for this property and the city wasn't looking at it. So I'm glad to hear that it is now within our realm of grasp. And it's a debt that I can swallow for this, for the residents of Swift Current. So I will be in favor of this.
Thank you very much, Counselor Tuntland Weep. Oh, Counselor Christiansen, you're up next.
Counselor Pluas is letting me go first.
That's because he's going to be longer than all of us.
Yeah, yeah, and fair enough, he should be. And the reason I wanted to talk before him is, you know, during my short time on council, Counselor Ryan Pluas has been a passionate advocate for this. And I could not possibly be more supportive of this motion. And I'm glad to see that it's coming, or hopefully is going to come to fruition. Well, it will, at some point it will, no matter what, whether we get the funding or not. I, you know, Counselor Tuntland Weep said that she would take on debt for this. Quite honestly, I think we'll be able to do this without debt with some community support, which I'm sure we'll get. And if we have to tighten our belts here and there, tighten the budgets down, we can do this without debt anyway. So I'm one hundred percent supportive of this. And I just wanted to give Ryan a little bit of a kudo before he talked, because he will dominate us now.
Thank you, Counselor Christiansen. Counselor Pluas, do you have one or two words to say?
You know, I might even have a few more than those, Your Worship. But, you know, I thank you for that. But I was actually going to say thanks to Counselor Wall, because I think that in our time, although short that it might have been so far in serving together, one of the things that I've noted about him is that, as I also believe, that our community should be judged by how we look after those least fortunate that reside here. And Counselor Wall made that comment, that this is a need first, and it was followed up by several others. And I couldn't agree more that this isn't a want, this is a need. And frankly, whether there's grant funding or not available for this project, I would be in favor of seeing it happen in our community, because I believe that this is an important issue that we lead on. I don't like the fact that we don't currently have a truly accessible and barrier-free park in our community. We've done our best with a lot of facilities, we've retrofitted several, we've put pour-and-play services in place. We've got, we've come a distance, for sure. It's better than it was in the past. But there are still barriers, you know, when, again, I've said this before, but, you know, I'm a dad to three able-bodied kids. And when I see them spending time on the playground, playing with their friends, it really fills your heart, it, you know, it fills your bucket. And I can only imagine how that would be if I had to watch one of my kids not able to participate fully in play. And as a kid, if you can't play, heartbreaking. Very, very difficult thing for me personally to come to terms with, that we have kids in our community who maybe are held back from fully participating with their peers. And that's just not okay. So for me, it's a need. And not just really for our community, and it was mentioned that, you know, this would be intended to be a destination park. So this would bring people in from outside of our community. You know, based on the percentage of Canadians living with some sort of disability that would limit their activities of daily living, if you extrapolated that number through the southwest, we'd have roughly a couple thousand people who could come and take advantage of this park, you know. And again, not just kids playing on this, but if you're an adult whose ability to get around is challenged, and you have kids, again, I mean, playing with your kids is a big part of life. And so it's, this is more than just for kids with disabilities or kids with, who lack the ability to fully participate in play. This is also, in my mind, for all the other family members who come in. This is also, in my mind, for all the other family members who come in. You know, my family has a, a tradition on July first of going to one of the parks around, and we have a picnic. And, you know, if one of us was a mobility challenger in a wheelchair, it would limit that person's ability to participate in that family activity. And that, again, not that we couldn't make other arrangements, but if we had a destination for that, those people would probably make great use of a park like that. And, and this is a city of, this is, you know, the taxpayers in Swift Current, they're gonna be paying for this. If we take debt, that would be the case. I also think that we wouldn't be looking at a position of where we would be taking debt for this. So, you know, this, to me, it's not even really in my thoughts that this would be something we would need to go and borrow to do. I'm sure that there would be plenty of support in our community to get this done. And I also think that as a destination park, there might be plenty of support from across the southwest to get something like this done in the southwest or in, in Swift Current as well. You know, the location, I think, is, makes sense. I mean, I, it's a nice location. You know, we have the ability to do it. And I agree with you that a retrofit probably just isn't gonna get the job done, that it's gonna have to be built from scratch standalone play, play structure or, or, you know, I think it's more than just the play structure, obviously. But so, yeah, I mean, obviously, I'm in support of this, your worship. But, you know, I just, I'm very happy to see this come forward. I know it's not a done deal. It's, it's simply at this point, an application for grant funding. But I just did want to make the point that I, you know, I don't see this as being a, a debt issue. I don't think we're gonna have to look at that. And, and it really is something that we need in our community and, and that, that we should be proud of even just making the application to get this done because to me, it's, it shows leadership. So I want to just say thanks to admin for bringing this forward as well. And successful or not in grant funding, you can rely on me to continue to be an advocate for projects like this throughout the City of Swift Current. So sorry for the length, again, your worship.
No, no problem, councillor Pluas. We know, all of us in council know this has been a passion of yours. And, and like councillor Christensen, I should have maybe spoke before, but I, I, I support you a hundred percent in that passion. I, I do want to say a couple of things. I think that is a, a, a good location. Like Mr. Jones said, it is a destination. People will be driving there. You know, the three point seven acres, we're gonna have to put a bit of a parking lot in there, like he said, so that'll eat up some of it and, and some things. And, and also, as far as debt, I too believe that there would be enough community support for this. If, if we got this grant from the feds, I think we'd have enough community support that we could pay our hundred and eighty-seven thousand five hundred just out of community businesses and support from the area. I know I, I talked to my daughter, my eldest daughter, about this. And she's a schoolteacher and she's, she's now at the comp. But she used to work with quite a few special needs children. And she talked about, I think the playground at the, at the, it called Centennial, is supposedly for these special needs. And there's only one little structure they can go on. And she said, well, whatever you do, you gotta make the structure for everyone. And, and Mr. Jones had mentioned to me last week, he said, well, on the, on the monkey bar portion, there's a place you can, you can drive a wheelchair under. And then the, the children with upper body strength can climb the monkey bars, which is something. So all these things are so important. And, and also, when you think about family members participating, I'm not sure. I never played grounders with my children, I was too busy. But with my grandkids, I've played grounders on, on playground structures. And it's just a tag game. You may laugh, councillor Wall, but I have. And it would be nice if, if a grandpa or grandma was in a wheelchair that, that they could play grounders or they could play grounders with their, their grandchild or their child and be able to run up these ramps and, and play. So it's definitely a need and a want. And without further ado, I'm not gonna say anything.
Could I ask one more question?
Yes, go ahead.
And one comment. One of the suggestions would be to, to sell the, sell it as a naming right and which probably would bring somebody. And also, could we instruct the administration to start selling of these lots? Because they're sitting empty, they're not doing nothing. And if somebody is interested in buying them, could they maybe bring a report back and say what we could do with them?
Councillor Wall, as far as these lots, I think, I mean, it's an idea I had, an idea you had, obviously. And I think maybe at our next GPC, we can ask, we can ask admin, they can start working on it. But at our next GPC or in September, that'd be a, a good topic to be talking about, these lots along this one acre partial that we already own. And as far as naming rights, whether it's naming rights or just going out to the community and asking for donations, whatever we, we need to do here. But if nothing else, if we need a hundred and eighty-seven thousand from the public purse, we're going to take it for this project. I want to make that resolution today, or that's what we're making today. If that's what we require, I don't think we'll require it from the public purse. If we get approved of this, I'm sure we'll have enough, enough community support for this because it is such a need. And there is a lot of passion, not just around this council table, but around the whole City of Swift Current. And like, I believe as councillor Pluas said, how we treat, how we treat the, the poorest among us, how we treat the people that are, really reflects on us. It really does. And this reflection here for our, for the children that need this and require this, it's very, very important to me and to all of council. So I would like to now call for the question. This was moved by councillor Schweitzer and seconded by councillor Tuntland-Weeb. All those in favor, please raise your hands. This motion is passed. I'm not gonna say any other closing remarks except thank you for coming on lunchtime on Monday. I know it's been a, it's, it has been a tough meeting. There's many sleepless nights that many of us have had. Thank you, admin, for putting all this together for us, all the different work. And now, this now concludes the special council meeting for this fifth day of July, twenty twenty-one. I will be looking for a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I will move that we adjourn this meeting, your worship.
Thank you, councillor Wall, and a seconder?
I will second that.
Thank you. All those in favor, thank you very much.